And you're all set.
You're gonna call the role first, I think.
I shall. I will call the role for both committees. Ms. Naylor.
Present.
Ms. Hurst.
Present.
Ms. Perez.
Present.
Ms. Gresham.
Present.
Mr. Collins.
Here.
And Attorney Murphy.
Present.
Wonderful. So, meeting has been called to order at 5:01, or 5 o'clock, actually, we started roll call. So if we could, I guess, just dive into the agenda?
Sure, let me get it up for you. Does everybody see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, thank you so much. So the first item on the agenda is the coaches' access to Power School. So Superintendent, do you wanna?
Yeah.
Lead us into that?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. Thanks, Latonya. Paul and Dwayne, do you wanna take us through the access they have and the reasons for it? Maybe, maybe starting with Paul?
Sure, yes, thanks Superintendent. Good evening, everybody. I wasn't 100% sure what the key question was with this agenda item, but what I can speak to is, within Power School, most of our coaches obviously have other roles within the district, and so at this time, they would have access to Power School, depending on their role, right? So if they're a classroom teacher, they would have access to Power School for the students in their respective classrooms. So I think this may relate, I think that we had some conversation a while back about, how do we potentially allowing coaches to have, be able to see in Power School the students who are on their respective teams? And so that's not access that we have at this time. There's some complexities there in the sense that the system that's used to track sports rosters is, kind of exists independently of Power School. So where Dwayne, and Dwayne, you can probably speak to it better than I can, but where Dwayne tracks the rosters of a particular team at a particular school is a different information system than Power School, and so, yeah, I mean, that's kind of where we are at the moment relative to coaches. So many of our coaches have access to Power School for the, whatever their particular role is outside of their role as a coach, and then they have access in the system that Dwayne uses to see who the roster is of students who are on the teams they coach. Dwayne, I don't know if you wanna say anything about that?
Yeah, so Paul, I'll hop in real quick. So the way it works in the beginning of a given school year, Paul, I'll go to Carolyn Strong, and she'll have all of the SPS students in the, obviously, in the high schools. We have them dropped into the MIAA database, just the entire, like I said, the high schools get dropped into there because those are the folks that are gonna be participating in sports. So they're dropped into the MIA website, and then what will happen is at the beginning of each season, I'll give a coach a deadline of when I need the roster into my department. Once their roster, JV freshman program, varsity program, is submitted to myself and my department, will be, then be able to go into the MIAA, which will have all the schools already prior dropped into their database. And then what we'll do is we'll take the roster from the coach, and we'll identify the kids in the MIA database, and then we'll update that roster on the MIA database. So you'll be able to see who's on a team that way. Currently, as Paul, as you alluded to, if a, if a coach is a teacher in the building, they will be able to see their student in their classroom, but they won't be able to see what's going on in other classrooms. They'll be allowed that access, as you alluded to earlier. And if a coach isn't a SPS, SPS staff member, and just a coach in that sole purpose, then they wouldn't be able to access the Power School like a classroom teacher might be able to do. In the past, when I was an administrator at Commerce, we had a scholar-athletes program that worked closely, and LeVar, he's shaking his head because, again, I was at Commerce, and that's where LeVar coaches at. The scholar-athletes program was granted that access, and they would be able to work closely with myself and the coaches in that particular school to track the student's progress. But a coach who, a coach, whether SPS member or not, wouldn't have access to all the students' Power School grades. If that makes sense for everyone. Sorry.
Yeah. I, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So, Mr. Early, that is because of confidentiality that they went, okay, perfect.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
So, Dwayne, if a, if a coach had a question about something, do they have the the AD at the high school, who's an administrator at the high school, to go to where they can get the information they need? Because they would have access, right?
That, that's correct, Dan. So, like I said, in my role previous to taking over this role, I was that person that the coach would come to and ask for an update on the students' grades, and I had that access as an admin in the school.
May, may I ask, Coach Click, I know that you're a coach, and you're not an employee of the school, per se, but you are a coach. And so part of this conversation came up from talking to folks like yourself who are in those positions where you don't have access to the grades at all, regardless of who the student is. Could you share, like,
Yeah.
why, why is it important, why do you feel, what is your perspective on this? And why, why it is an issue for several coaches?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to echo, Dwayne Early's doing an excellent job. He is correct. When he was at the high school commerce, it was a kind of easy transaction. With all that being said, for me, coaching isn't just November, December, January, February, March, as far as the basketball season goes. For me, coaching is 12, 12 months out of the year. Obviously, when they have summer school, we're not in session, but for me, I would like to have, I know someone mentioned it, if you're a volunteer, you have access to view certain students' grades. Even if we have a roster of 45, let's take 45 as a number, that we get in November, we upload it to Mr. Early and his staff, I would like to be able to keep track of those students throughout the year. It just makes sense for me to check on them periodically, if I can just have access to chime in on it from sitting at my desk, working, to chime in on my cellphone. This makes it easier for us to do that versus let me call such and such to see, to check on, you know, Jordan Click, per se, per se. So it's, as a, as a coach that, who really wants to see our youth strive all year round, and I'm ingrained in the city, I just, I'm speaking personally that I wanna see, I wanna do more. You know, if you say it's not available, then I will fall back, but me, as being who I am, I wanna, I wanna be around these kids 12, 12 months out of the year if I can. That's just the way I see it. It's not, it's not a four-month program for me, it's 12 months out of the year. So that's why it's important for me to try to advocate to see if we can get some sort of access. And then I just wanna circle back and I'll wrap up. We started this back with, before Mr. Early, with Mike Martin, so this is not nothing new. We had started to have these conversations before, because we were at the community center levels at the time, and we were trying to get access to see them when they come to the community centers, with myself, Shay, and Mr. Keyshawn Dodge at our prospective centers. And we, because we just wanted to track them down. If you're struggling in English, let's, let's get you the help. Because a lot of times, if you ask a student, student athlete, or a student, they're not gonna tell you the truth. So we want them, we just want to kind of check in on them and then have that conversation, because quite frankly, we see them a lot, and we have relationships with these kids. So that's all. I'm just trying to advocate to see if we can do more. Again, if there's something that we can't do, hey, I'll definitely fall back and fall in line with proper protocols.
Thank you. I do have some questions, but I wanna open it up to the rest of the school committee members to see if you have questions or comments.
I have a question, Mrs. Naylor.
Yes, ma'am.
And it may have been either the Superintendent or AD Early who mentioned this. So do we have volunteers that have access to that information? No, volunteers do not.
Okay.
And coaches who don't work for the district don't have access, but are they considered like special employees? What are they, how do they fall?
So, so say I was, say Dwayne Early was LeVar Click's English teacher, and I was his basketball coach as well. I could see his English grades, because I'm his teacher, and I work in the school, but I wouldn't be able to see what he's doing in other classes, because it's just, I would only have access to what I have access to in Power School as an educator. I couldn't go into Mr. Warwick's classroom and check what his student roster is doing. I only see what is, what my, my kids have.
I, I got that part. I think my question was, does, what category do coaches fall under? Do they fall under like special employee? Are they a volunteer?
Ma'am, can I ask a clarifying question before you answer that, Mr. Warwick? I, what's the difference between Power School access and data warehouse access? Because I know that the community centers have access to data warehouse, and I know that our AmeriCorps, not our, but AmeriCorps members and student scholar athletes and a couple of other programs have access to Power School at some level. What's, can you, and clarifying, I guess to kind of couple that with school committee woman Hurst's question, could you clarify that, please?
Yeah. So I can probably.
Do a better job on the Power School issue, what we release with parent permission to the community centers, because Paul arranged all that and did a great job with it. So Paul, do you wanna walk us through that?
Yeah, sure, happy to. Yeah, and it's helpful.
Question Denise, sorry.
Yeah, it's helpful clarification on the volunteer thing, because we certainly have volunteers who have access to student data in the sense that we have the community data warehouse, which you all are familiar with. So that's the program where we have community partners, I think, including some of the ones that Mr. Click had mentioned, who have signed MOUs with us, and have direct access into the data warehouse for the specific students who have signed up to participate in their particular program, and as part of that signup process have received parent consent relative to FERPA for that organization. So it could be the Southern Community Center, it could be the Boys and Girls Club. So we do have, we have 16 or 17, I think, organizations who have MOUs with us to be part of the data warehouse, and then Ms. Naylor, to your question, so there is a big difference, right? So Power School is our student information system, it's our system of record, it's where, you know, attendance, grades, discipline. It's really the digital version of a student's school record is really what Power School is. The data warehouse is really just a reporting tool, right? So it's not, it's not the Power School I would describe as transactional, right? It's where our, it's where our staff go in and do business. The data warehouse is simply a place where folks can get data and reports, and so I do think, you know, as it relates to this conversation, you know, if we were gonna go down the road and of trying to figure out a way to provide greater kind of data access to coaches, probably the data warehouse would be the way to go as opposed to Power School. And then, as you said, Ms. Naylor, we do have partner organizations like AmeriCorps, for whom we're providing, you know, we have a category of people who are kind of doing work, like employees, right? They're in our buildings, who have access because of the nature of the work they're doing. So I think in many respects, the reason we haven't sort of solved this for coaches is a technical, you know, it's not, it's not sort of a will issue so much as a technical issue in terms of figuring out how to do it, and to be frank, finding the capacity and time to do it. But I do think it's probably the data warehouses was, is probably the the answer more so than Power School in terms of access.
To answer Denise's question, some coaches are paid and hired and paid, and then we have some volunteers that help some coaches. So we have some of both. You know, there's always a paid coach, but sometimes we get volunteers that work with the paid coaches. So we have some of both, Denise.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
We have a question, Mrs. Naylor. The question is, do we have a policy, or what's the legality of this issue, if any? I think we have to look from that perspective.
So, well. Well, yeah, I mean, obviously, Mindy, I'll defer to you. I just, what I was gonna say about that is, you know, we went through a legal review for the purpose of the community data warehouse, and generally speaking, the law that governs this is FERPA, which is, and what FERPA, FERPA is, it's both a blessing and a curse, that it's a little bit broadly written and open to interpretation. But it, you know, generally says the people who have rights to see a student's record are the people who need to see that student's record for purposes of their education, right? So there's a lot of wiggle and a lot of judgment in there when you think about a coach. I mean, clearly, it makes a lot of sense to me that coaches are part of a student's education, they're part of supporting their student's education. So you could certainly make an argument, but Mindy, I should, I should stop talking law and hand it off to you.
You're doing fine. You're doing fine. I must have taught you well, or your wife taught you well. So in addition to FERPA, which is the federal statute protecting student education records, Massachusetts has, both in terms of statute and regulation, and in looking at the regulation with regarding access to student records by third parties, because clearly a coach would be a third party in, in the, and it says authorized school personnel, which would have access to student record, our school administrators, teachers, counselors, and other professionals who are employed by the district or who are providing student services to the student under an agreement such as a service provider. So for those services that you've referenced, the MOU with them had a specific section with regards to access to student records, what they could access, how they were to use it, confidentiality, their pledge to comply with FERPA and mass regulation. In addition, that it indicates any such personnel, I should, I'm sorry, not employed directly by the district shall have access only to the student record information that is required for them to perform their duty. So an argument can be made that in the offseason, a coach does not have reason to access the record for the purpose for which they were hired to coach a team. Now, I understand that coaches do far more than physically coach a team or during the season. Has any thought been given to parental permission? You know, as long as a parent guardian gives permission, there could be access. I, I think, even if a parent does give permission, I think you still have to be concerned about the non-employee would still only have to access that information through the assistant principal. I think you'd still have to have that check, because they would not have, they couldn't get into the system, because they don't have permission to get into the system.
Right.
But, you know, there's gotta be some guardrails to protect against, you know, the wide amount of information that is available on Power School. You know, if it's, if it's for grades, and Paul, I don't know if you can put those guardrails in place, or how expensive that is, and limit access, or, you know, so those are kind of the comments I have, because I don't think that 603 CMR 23 allows offseason coaches access as a third party to student records without parental permission.
Just.
Go, go ahead, Paul.
I was gonna say, as a technical matter, right? You know, we have the, we have the guardrails, we have a way to do guardrails, right? Because that's what we did with the community data warehouse. We have a system where we say, I'll use Southern Community Center. There are 40 kids in the Southern Communities After School Program. Thirty-eight of those kids have parents who've said, given a release. And so we can go into our data warehouse, and we can say, these 38 kids with a parental release, and these 38 kids only are the only kids. So, so, you know, a member of the Southern Community Center can sign into our data warehouse, but when they sign in, they only see those 38 kids. So we do have, as a technical matter, we have the possibility of guardrails. There are some other, you know, we've looked at this previously with the rosters, and there are some other technical hurdles that would have to be overcome, just because the systems, you know, it's all manual, the sort of interaction between these two systems, it's not something that's automated.
Thank you, Paul. That kind of was what I was gonna ask about. I was gonna say, you know, when we think about the warehouse, that it would allow folks to be able to only access that information, and then it would be on a quarterly basis, or whenever the grades come out, that would be updated. So if a parent did, in fact, give permission, which all of, all of the coaches may not want access, so it's not, I don't even think it's the case where we're looking at every single coach necessarily having access. I think it's more about the ones that want to. And I know there are some kids that they just do better because their coach is involved, and their coach encourages them, and when their coach knows what's going on, they're able to help them and mentor them. Basically, they're providing, providing mentoring to those kids. So I guess I wanna know, like, for next steps, if we wanted to consider an adjustment to allow this parental provision, how would we go about putting that on the floor so that we could discuss that or vote on that at some point in the future?
I mean, I guess I can speak to the, I can't speak to the sort of the school committee process you're talking about in terms of bringing it forward as a school committee matter. In terms of a process, I would, I guess my recommendation would be if we were to, if we wanted to go in that direction, we would follow a process similar to the data warehouse, such that when students sign up to participate in a particular sport, we would potentially make a FERPA release language, an explicit part of that signup for the sport. That's kind of what we do with the community data warehouse, right? If you're signing up to be part of this after-school program, here's the release to allow the data sharing. And then, I know I keep referencing the technical challenge, right? So what has, you know, so we provide that roster to Dwayne of all of the high school students that goes into the MIA database. We have to have a way to then get out of the MIA database, the rosters for all the sports, and then load, reflect that in the data warehouse, and in the security model in the data warehouse, so that a particular coach, just like I gave that example of the 38 students that are visible to the Southern Community Center, how do I make, you know, we have to have, we have to get the roster out of the MIA, and then we have to build the architecture on the backend within the data warehouse, such that, okay, I load this roster that says this is the Commerce Basketball Team. Now I'm making it so the, you know, I'm giving an account to whoever's the Commerce Basketball Coach, and then I'm saying, okay, this account that's tied to this Commerce Basketball Coach can see these students who are the members of the Commerce Basketball Team. So that, I mean, that's the process we would go through if we're gonna try to do that, and, you know, there are some, it's not, not super simple, it's not impossible, but it's not something that's, you know, kind of flip of a switch.
Can I, can I say something, Mrs. Naylor?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mrs. Naylor. On my screen. So, this is the first time I'm hearing of this, but it, but it makes sense, and I appreciate what you're saying, Coach Click, about the fact that, you know, you're not committed to these, to these kids just during basketball season, but throughout the year. And I know that, you know, from a holistic perspective, it's really important to be involved with them throughout the whole year, and not just right before basketball season and throughout the season. So I get that, and I appreciate that, and I also think, you know, we've heard how important it is for our kids to excel, not only academically, but athletically, and vice versa. So I would be, I understand the need for you to be able to have access. I do think it is critical, like Attorney Phelps said, to make sure that parents give permission. But I also think that the other guardrail that would make me feel a bit more comfortable, because it it is information that's confidential, is that it only be that the head coach be allowed to have it, and not all the other coaches. Like when Superintendent Warwick was saying, you know, we have some coaches, and then we have other coaches who help those coaches, like the assistant coaches, that it would only be one point person that would have access to that information, and there would be some level of, of an agreement that they would, you know, be the only ones to access that data warehouse, so that we knew that it wasn't, you know, 10 different coaches, and people were trying to keep track of whether or not that person was still a coach, still with the district, you know, whatever the case may be, but that it be, you know, one head coach. And I know you said, Ms. Naylor, that not all coaches may want it, but if some coaches find out that it's available to one, then we have to make sure that it's available to all of them, and for all sports.
Can I ask a question? Dwayne, what would you recommend relative to how we could best handle this?
So, again, Dan, being in that role and working closely with LeVar, I, I thought the safest way for privacy for amongst students is that that coach works with the building, the building AD. I was, myself and LeVar, we spoke a number of times a day, so it was never a point where he could, he he wasn't aware, whether it was in season or not, of what his, what his kids were doing, because we were, we were very good communicators, as, as I think the assistant principals in the building are. Just for like, my fear is just the privacy stuff. But the system that's in place with the assistant AD and assistant principal in the building, clearly communicating with the coach was what I thought was the, good for privacy for the student. Because for those of you who have been in Power School, and I know Paul can, Paul alluded to this earlier, it's, it's got everything, for everything tied to that student is, is in there, and there's a lot of information that could, it could get into a lot of different places with that access.
So, so AD Early, if I may ask, and, oh, Chris, go ahead, I apologize, go ahead.
Oh, no, he, AD Early just got exactly to where I was going to go.
Yeah.
How, in, in the data warehouse, what information about a student is made available? Because AD Early just brought up a really good point. We don't want them having, necessarily having access to all their disciplinary records, their health records, to, you know, it's, what is available?
All of the same data that's in Power School is available in the data warehouse. The difference is, and the reason I think of data warehouse differently than Power School is our ability in the data warehouse to, we refer to it as security trimming, but we're able to tighten up what you can see. And so conceivably, we could write a report that is grades and nothing else, and make that the only thing that coaches could see. So we have that ability. We don't have that ability in Power School, which is why I think Power School would be, I completely agree with AD Early, that Power School would be of concern.
So you got right to my point, Chris. I was gonna ask if AD Early, if you saw that as an issue of coaches were able to just access the grades, which is ultimately, I think the grades and attendance are the biggest things, because if they don't attend, you're in a normal day, if they don't attend school, they're not supposed to be playing games and stuff like that anyways. But for the grades, definitely. Would that, do you perceive that as an issue, only having access to the grades and maybe the attendance?
I, again, just knowing Power School and just knowing all the information and.
Oh, so, I'm sorry, I'm not referring to Power School, I'm referring to the data warehouse.
Oh.
So not, so not all their personal home address, health, disciplinary, not that stuff, only their grades and their attendance.
But that's also in data warehouse, isn't it?
Right, so that's, that's what I'm referring to, the data warehouse that, I, I like Paul's suggestion of perhaps going the route of data warehouse instead of Power School, and only giving them access to the information we think they need, which I think grades, because if they don't have a certain grade average, they can't play sports. So they wanna keep aware of whether or not their students are doing well in the offseason, because they may not have them in the, in the on-season. But then also the attendance as well, which to me, again, plays a part in whether or not they're able to be active in their sports. So I could see us correlating that to the role of a coach and saying those are two things that they would be concerned about anyways. But other things I can understand I'm not having access to.
Yeah, so I'm not sure if I, I know Dan asked me for my recommendation. Mine would be to stay away from Power School just because of all the things that could be divulged out of Power School. So that would be my recommendation, is the way it is, the role that I had before, where I was in great communication with the coaches, anything they needed, they called, I let them know that, I think that system that's in place is the, is the safest and most private way to go. So my recommendation would be to stay away from all the, the Power School access.
Yes. So is this being brought up because there is a concern with communication?
Yes, yes.
So, so, does it make sense that if, based on what AD Early just recommended, that there be perhaps a conversation with those folks in the school building who have access to that information, that they, you know, be a little bit more accessible or available to coaches when they're calling, because you know, they're trying to make sure that they're staying on top of what's happening? Versus going this route and changing the system completely?
Well, I think it's up to, that's why I wanted to bring this up in subcommittee, and I asked, you know, what would be the next steps, because I think it would be important, and not this year, because of all the stuff we're going through already, but perhaps for next year to look at, having a real conversation around what this could look like, only because I, I am concerned about the number of calls that I hear from people saying that they want to, you know, their, their children are failing, and they need help, and the coach is wanting to help and not having access to the information. So by us just being able to, you know, minimize some of the stress that some of our administrators already have to deal with, and having one extra person they need to email, one extra person they need to. and having one extra person they need to email, one extra person they need to talk to, if they could just pull their grades up really quickly and that's all they wanna see, I just personally, I think it makes sense if we have the ability, which we do through data warehouse. So that's why I wanted to bring it up as a possibility. I don't think we'll finalize it today. But I absolutely wanted to at least start the conversation again and then hopefully revisit this again, which hopefully, at that point, Paul having some idea of what this conversation is about and then being able to present to us during another subcommittee, meaning what options may be available to us and what what that will look like. If that makes sense. Cause I do want us to move on to the next part of the agenda, but I at least wanted to start the conversation. Yes, Chris?
Would it, would it be, would it make sense to ask Dwayne to poll the coaches and see? And I kind of tend, I really agree with what you're talking about, data warehouse and if it's, if we're gonna go any route and that'd be attendance and grades and just kind of poll coaches and see what do they think about that, rather than us making a decision because we're not coaching the kids right now? Before we get back together, that information, I think we'd all, would be good for all of us.
Thank you. I think that's great.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, is this one um incident or has been? What's the history behind all this?
I've had several, um, I've had at least five or six parents reach out to me and I've had a lot of athletes reach out to me. Um, saying that they think if their coaches had more information that they could help them with before they fell off the wagon, that they probably would have done better. And the coach is saying the same thing, they didn't know that they should even be thinking about that or who they would talk to. Because the ones that don't work in the schools don't really understand the communication part. The ones that work for the schools understand who to talk to and all of that, but those that don't, they're like, well, I don't know who I'm supposed to even talk to to get that information. So I had one that I just recently helped walk through the process and connect them with who they need to talk to so that they could then and even I've talked to assistant principals who are like, oh, I don't even know who I would talk to or who's the coach for that person and I don't know who to reach out to and this and that. So it's not just like there's one coach, there's a lot of coaches in the buildings. So it's a lot of conversation that needs to happen for folks to stay on one page.
So I would say, I would look at it as a issue of communication and protocol, following protocols. Um, and that's a conversation that probably needs to be, to be happening at this point. You know what I'm saying?
Right. I I get it. I definitely do. So I would, if it's okay, I would like to table, table, oh, Peter.
Thank you guys. First of all, thank you for bringing this up, uh, with Tonya and uh, you know, I, it almost was like a shock to me that coaches would not know the grades of the the kids that they're coaching and that they're with, you know, on a daily basis and and as Coach Click said, you know, uh, all year round. So you know, I I think improving access, if we can do that, you know, in a way uh that is legal and appropriate, as as Mr. Early said, I think that would be great. Uh, you know, as as we all know, uh, we have a great athletic program. We've had some hiccups with with COVID, but maybe now's a good, good time to uh uh, and and it is true, as you said, Ms. Naylor, to the more our coaches are involved in the, in the, in the lives of our long peo- young people, the better they're going to to uh uh, to succeed. So I think some access to grades would be, would be appropriate. Uh, and so I I think we could uh whatever you guys think, but we should move it forward to uh, to some sort of vote at the school committee at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Attorney Murphy. So I guess, does it, it, can we table this part of the discussion and move on to the next item on the agenda, but I Paul, do you, do you have an idea of what we're looking for?
I do, yep. I'm happy to take that away and think about the sort of how and when we can get that done.
So maybe Paul can get back to us with the information on data warehouse. And in the meantime, Dwayne maybe could have a conversation with his ADs in each building and the coaches and get something out so that they know temporarily that they can just go to the uh AD in the building for what they need now, so we can try to help on both fronts.
Yeah, and uh, Mr. Early, I'll, I'll give you a call as well. Okay, no problem. And uh, Chris, as you said, spoke earlier, I can, I can do a poll and and we can um use that data to inform our decision as well. Um, but again, I will all absolutely, uh, Dan, let it, uh, the coaches know and remind them who they need to speak to in the building. We we do that, we do that on a, on a consistent basis anyways, but I will reiterate it and I'll make sure that the message is clear.
So appreciate it, Dwayne. Thank you.
And if if we're going to go forward with it, which it I'm hearing a lot of kind of agreement on it. I would, I would think that we would also want to have draft policy language put together because we would want to do this as a policy. Um, so it's spelled out and there's no doubt, we don't have to do it, each time something comes up, we do a, a policy on it.
That, that would be great and and I I just, you know, would like to be involved in it because I, I once, if the decision is made to grant access, you know, there are liability issues if, if coaches don't use that access and and don't look at what the grades are, that you know, we'd have to think about as well. What is the responsibility of a coach looking at the grades and what is their responsibility to do something about it? So that's my concern um is is what, what, you know, not opening Pandora's box that creates additional liability for the coaches if there should be a failure to access the grades. So those are some of the issues. Happy to work with you um, with regards to that.
We would definitely ask the attorney to help us draft up the policy so we're on the right track as she did with the data warehouse work earlier, which was great.
Thank you so much. So we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda?
Yes, the next item on the agenda is the um Comcast Internet Essential Program update and that falls under Student and Parent Concern Subcommittee. Um, Superintendent Warwick?
Well, hey, Paul, can you give us an update on that?
Sure, and I appreciate Brad Plaza and Eileen Leahy being here to to speak to any questions you have relative to the program. I'll give a quick overview of where we are in terms of kind of the work we've been doing as a district to try to really address the the internet gap facing our families. You all know, I'm sure you've gotten the calls. But that's been a challenge throughout this year that we've, we've tried a lot of different things to solve for. And so just i- in in a numbers way, you know, we started last spring, we put out a thousand um T-Mobile hotspots that had unlimited data. And those were, uh, that was with funding from uh the Relief Act. And then we uh connected with Comcast and uh signed on to provision up to three thousand Internet Essentials accounts. So that's the same program and and obviously Brad and I leave can speak to it much better than I can, but that it's the same program where individual homeowners and and families in Springfield, you know, if they meet the income qualification can sign up for it on their own, but we contracted to pay on behalf of up to three thousand families. Um, so that was the second piece we did um to try to um address the, the, the gaps. And then uh, more recently, we've, we've received another four thousand hotspots from T-Mobile. That we're also are making available to students. Those are are data capped, so they were provided to us at no cost, but they're capped at a hundred gigabits per second for the year. And so really what we're telling schools on that is provide one to a student. If they run out of data, provide them with another one. Um, so this is the sort of trying to find everything we can. I will say before I hand it off to uh Brad and Eileen for anything they wanna mention and and they have made some, some helpful changes to the program over the last few months. But we've, we have struggled and I think schools have struggled to get families signed up for Internet Essentials, so we are not close to having used not close at all to having used the three thousand accounts we were willing to pay for. Um, and I think that's a variety of things. It's, it's people's, some of it is we had the hotspots first and so schools got really good at handing out hotspots. And then we said, now we want you to hand out codes for Internet Essentials. So that was a challenge. I think, you know, for some of our families, there's been challenge navigating the process to get signed up. And I think there's, you know, there's challenges with, once you're signed up, getting your equipment set up and and up and running, but but that's really, I mean, that's the broad brush version of of the steps we've gone through so far and Internet Essentials has certainly been a big piece of the puzzle for us trying to solve for the internet access at home. And so I I'm certainly happy to take questions on any of the, kind of what we've done on the divide and and I'm sure Brad and Eileen are as well, but I don't know, Brad, if you want, or Eileen, if you wanna just give your, your recap of of where we're at on this.
Yeah, yeah, happy to. And and thank you, Ms. Naylor, for inviting me and and the rest of the committee members and Paul for that recap and Superintendent Warwick for all of your support um as it relates to the program and getting the word out, not only you know, in the last year, but you know, Springfield Public Schools has always been um a champion in terms of you know, just providing folks awareness that this program is out there. I mean, it's been out there since two thousand and eleven. We actually just celebrated our ten, tenth year today. With some, you know, key milestones and I would like to um, if folks are amenable, just pull up a deck really quick. I I won't go through the mechanics of the program because it sounds like you're all very familiar with that, but I will just I wanna highlight some of the things we did during COVID. Um, and then, you know, uh, like Paul alluded to, happy to uh, happy to answer any specific questions that folks have. So can you now see my screen?
Yes.
Great, so let me so um high level, this is our Internet Essentials ecosystem. It's really the the core program itself, which is nine ninety-five internet, what you guys are supporting uh for students currently. And then that also gives them access if the family needed it to a computer that's a hundred and fifty dollars. They get a voucher for that and uh and then in person and uh right now really um online uh digital literacy training for our Internet Essentials porter and all of our partners around it. And then the Internet Essentials Partnership Program is what you are participating in. It's just, it's, it's a way that we can streamline the process for either a school district or a city or a nonprofit organization to fund Internet Essentials service for a defined period of time for um a specific audience of folks. And then Lift Zones. Lift Zones is a, is new. We've actually launched two already in Springfield um with the Boys and Girls Club Family Center, so Keyshawn and then um with Vinnie at the uh Boys and Girls Club on Karoo Street. And we're actually working with the YMCA to hook up three locations um of theirs. And I'll give you what Lift Zones is and then um where, you know, Eileen and I are still looking to connect other facilities. So if this group has um some recommendations, happy to take them tonight or even in an email if if folks wanna share those, that'd be great. But basically, we launched Lift Zones la- at the end of last year, saw a real need where communities, you know, community centers, boys and girls clubs were functioning as the schoolhouse while, you know, you guys were in a hybrid learning uh mode and kids maybe couldn't be at home because a parent wasn't at home, so they were going to the club. And um our goal was to really increase the network capacity at those locations to make sure that they had bandwidth to support, you know, large numbers of kids that may be coming to distance learn. And uh so that's how the program started. We've made a commitment as a company to connect a thousand locations by the end of this year across the country. And um it's evolving to the point of obviously now, um, you know, things are beginning to change, you know, and and I'm speaking obviously uh not just Springfield, our entire region, but some school districts are starting to go back to school at a defined date or already back. And, you know, hopefully, for all our sakes, next year hopefully returns to some normalcy as we get into the school year. So this program has evolved to, we're really now looking for any community organization that needs a boost to help with whatever they're doing to help service their clients. So it could be workforce development training for adults or just a spot where folks can come and work on resumes that now need to get back in the workforce. Um, or a community center that's supported kids during school or after school. So um, and this is a three-year commitment to those organizations, the service is free and there's no installation fee and they, and they have it for three years and um it helps them, you know, bridge this gap from COVID into normalcy and then beyond. And then I'll just flip real quick. I covered the, so COVID, so the COVID response, you know, you're very familiar with a lot of this, but you know, Comcast stepped up um in a big way to try and support those um that did not have access um through the Internet Essentials program. So you see the, the new speed fifty by five, uh that's actually, we increased that twice over the last year. Uh, you know, last year at this time it was fifty by three and then we increased it to twenty-five by three. And then we recently increased it to fifty by five on March first. Um, and and as many of you would even appreciate, I'm sure the upload speed um being increased is significant with, you know, you have students uploading things to Google Classrooms and other um sites, so that, you know, that upload is helpful. In addition to the download, you can certainly uh support a family now with the fifty by five. And then, you know, we've, you know, we're offering, so you guys are supporting um families, but as Paul said, even if someone signed up on their own outside of the the Internet Essentials partnership with you guys, um families or individuals can, will get two months free of service uh if they sign up before June thirtieth uh of this year. And we've actually extended that numerous times um since last year. And um we've opened up all of our Xfinity Wi-Fi hotspots that are in businesses or outdoor locations and those are open until um June as well. And that, again, just affords someone the opportunity, if they're out in the community, they can pull up the XFi app and find where those locations are and sign on. Um, they don't need to have a Comcast account and if they have an Internet Essentials account, they, they would have access immediately. And then the big thing I think is you know, we've, we're offering amnesty now for uh, you know, any length of time or any debt amount that someone may have so they can sign up. It won't preclude them from signing up if they have a back due balance with Comcast. Uh, generally speaking, prior to the pandemic, if it was under a year, we asked them to pay that first. If it was over a year, we would provide uh amnesty so that they could sign up. We just made it amnesty for all um at this point and that um extends as well through June thirtieth. And then the last piece I'll touch on, sorry, my slide's on the other screen, um is uh, this is just, I I'm not gonna read all this, so don't, don't get nervous. This is just the timeline of um, since we launched the program. You can see all the work we did during COVID. Um, the thing that I think stands out is the expansions. You know, so you all know, obviously, your desired population and what you're concerned about in this discussion is students and families. Um, and that's when we launched the program, that was the core. But, you know, in six, twenty sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, we kept in increasing um who was uh had access to ultimately now it's any low-income individual. We added in HUD housing residents, then seniors and veterans. And now it's any low-income individual. So in other walks of life that you're in, you know that, that any low-income individual, whether they have kid, children or not um in the school system uh could be eligible for this program as well. And again, you know, you, as you can see, we launched it in two thousand and eleven, we're in two thousand and twenty-one, the price has always been nine ninety-five and they, and folks have never had to pay uh equipment fees. So, you know, I I think, and then these are the last way for folks to get connected. Really, it's InternetEssentials.com and they call, and they can call us. And as Paul said, they get a code, they call our dedicated line. And they should be able to sign up um pretty seamlessly. So with that, if I can navigate back, I will stop sharing my screen, which I can't figure out how to do. Oh, here it stops here. Good, now I can see you all again. So, so yeah, so I mean, I say all that, we're happy to answer any questions um on the program and um truly, we do appreciate the, the partnership with the school system. Um, you know, not every school system uh has, you know, well, I should say, every school system in the last year has been beating down the door, wanting to work with us to share information and find ways to partner. But Springfield was ahead of the curve in terms of uh seeing the value in this program and messaging it to students. I know we've done some letters home from the superintendent in prior years and uh you all should be commended for doing what you can to notify families uh about it to get them connected. So I thank you for the time and, you know, happy to answer questions related to the program as best I can. And if I can't, I promise you I will get you an answer.
All right, thank you. Um, any questions? Anyone have any questions?
I have a comment. More than anything, I think. Um, I remember that was a huge issue as we were publicizing it, was that amnesty that you are offering now, which I don't think a lot of people are aware of. Um, I think folks are still thinking about that as the one caveat, as if you happen to have something happen in your past and you fall into a bad place, that now you can't get Internet Essentials and and now that we know that is not the case for now, at least until June thirtieth. I think that's some messaging that we could absolutely assist with making sure folks are aware of. I was just on a panel a couple of weeks ago and people said that again, so it's a, it's an untruth now that people are still pushing out there and publicizing and so, Paul, that might be why we didn't get our three thousand. Gets our three thousand because of people not having the truth. Uh, so thank you for letting us know about that because I I wasn't aware of that either.
Yeah, and please, and please notify folks because like, you know, now is the time for them to get in with that policy in place. And uh, and they also can benefit from that two free months if they're not on the school plan either, so.
So I have a question. So I have a question. So they're not charged if they go over their data? The parents are?
Yeah, so we, so related to user-based billing. So we were going to implement a one point two terabyte internet data usage for Xfinity internet customers. But we've delayed that now until at at the earliest some point in two thousand twenty-two. So there's no impact to folks now. And we really did that because we recognized that the plans were new. And that folks needed to, you know, even though a small percentage of folks could potentially go over that one point two. We wanted to provide them with more time to get familiar with it, get, you know, reorient themselves. Hopefully, we're back to a more normal environment in two thousand twenty-two and then I think our company will reassess it. But that's been delayed, so there's no impact to anyone currently.
All right.
As a relative to that.
Perfect. That's good to know. Thank you.
Yes.
Mrs. Gresham, may I make a comment?
Sure.
So Brad and Eileen, to Mrs. Gresham and Mrs. Naylor's point. I think it's really critical to make sure that that messaging goes out to the community. Because Mrs. Naylor is right, I didn't know about the amnesty for the Internet Essentials. And when the messaging came out about the data cap, you know, that really raised a lot of eyebrows. Really anxious and upset about it. And I think that, you know, from a public relations standpoint, that it would probably be really great. For you to be able to share with them that the amnesty exists and it exists until June thirtieth. And even though kids might not be quote unquote in school, you know, the district does offer some level of summer programming. Where kids may still need to have access to the internet. And that would be really helpful for parents to to know. And I think it would help mitigate some of the feelings that people were feeling about the the data cap.
Yeah, and Paul, I mean, that's something we should maybe kick offline and 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 you tell me who to work with, if it's you or or other staff members. But maybe there's, you know, through the, I know that your communications officer for the district had put up. A posting about Internet Essentials on the website, maybe we work together to do something like that, superintendent, whatever is amenable.
That'd be great. Yes. I think, you know, you, Paul and Azelle working together on that so we can get that information out. That would be great, Brad. Thank you.
Happy to. I, gentlemen, what I'll do is I'll pull something together and I'll get it over to you, Paul. I can do that tomorrow. That's easy.
Appreciate it, Brad.
Thanks.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Could I say something, please?
Yes, you may.
Okay, could you share that with the school committee members as well? Because I think this is, we need to communicate this to the community, you know. So if you could share the information that it's going to be transferred to the school committee, I will appreciate it.
Absolutely, and I'll I'll work with Azelle and and Brad and we'll put together, you know, we've done some messaging on this, but there's, you know. I've heard the same things you've heard where people are getting different pieces from different places. And so we'll share whatever we put together with Azelle with you guys for sure.
Yeah, and Paul, I'll get to, and you can get it to this group as well, our newest flyer, which I do believe. Should note some of these things on it. So I'll I'll get that collateral to you, you know, it's a PDF that can be shared. And then I'll draft the, what we can, what we can put on the website and share with everybody related to the amnesty.
Yes, yes, Chris.
That that, we obviously are going to reach, hopefully, we're going to make every effort we can to reach our school population and our parent population. But this is more than just that. It's the general public and well, correct, Brad?
That's correct. As it relates to the program eligibility, yes. Any anybody who's low income, whether they have a student in the in the Springfield Public Schools is would would be eligible. If they meet the criteria, they have to live in an area that is served by Comcast. So if they live in Springfield, they would be fine. You know, the amnesty is waived for all at this point, you know, not just the students. So that they they could get in as well. And and yeah, so. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just a suggestion, you might want to reach out to the mayor's office. You know, the weekly meetings that the mayor hands on COVID. Get a lot of people watching, plus it gets a lot of press coverage. And that might reach a broader group of people than we could, the piece, people who we might not reach. You may reach through that venue as well. That's all.
Very good suggestion. I see Eileen taking a note, so we will reach out to Mayasano's office. Done that in other communities. It was a part, it was in Hartford, Mayor Bronin did it. And some other communities as well in Connecticut and also Mass. So it's a good suggestion. And also too, what I will provide, just because I know, you know, you all are concerned, folks, for the entire population. I can get Paul the documents that would make someone eligible that doesn't have a child in the school system. I mean, it's on our website, but I I'll pull it out, provide that to Paul so we can filter it to you guys as well.
All right, sounds good. Any other questions or comments for Brad? No? All right. Then the next item, Ms. Naylor.
The the last item. Thank you. You too. Thank you. Thank you. So the last item on the agenda is the update on the cyber attack. So Superintendent and Paul?
Yeah, Paul, please.
Sure, and so so we did.
Form, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. We we did a, you know, we did do a big update or an update, I should say, at one of our February executive sessions. So I'll be a little, I think in the in the public session and and I'll rely on Attorney Phelps to guide me on this. But I need to be a little bit careful. I mean, it affects the security of our network, how much I say about what we're doing to make our network more secure. So I'll be a little bit, I'll give a really quick kind of where I think we're at with the cyber attack. And then I'm certainly happy to take questions as well and I'll I'll answer to the best of my ability. So, I mean, you guys know the history of the attack. We went through a process of stopping the attack, recovering and restoring. Investigating, notifying, and then we're still in the ongoing work of further securing, right? That's the, that'll, I mean, that'll be, that's always work, right? We will always be forever working to make our networks more secure. That was true before the attack. It'll be true for for good. And so in terms of notifications, you know, I had shared with you at the executive session. That we are going to do another round of notifications to some additional folks. That's really much more of an abundance of caution. We have much less reason to think they were actually breached. But their information was stored in a location where some information that was breached was also stored. And so we want to just do right by people, if you will, and and make sure that we're offering identity monitoring if there's any chance. So at a high level, the things that we're doing that that to really further secure the network. I I would put them in three buckets. So one is about people practices. And so that really comes down to training and I and also policy. So we will be coming back to the to the tech subcommittee and then ultimately the full committee. I'm hoping before next school year to bring you revisions to our acceptable use policy for students and staff. As well as a policy around our written information security program, which will basically lay out. How we secure sensitive information, how we secure sensitive data. And so there's, so there's some policy work to do. And then as part of that, there's also training work, right? So, I mean, the way this started is somebody responded to a phishing attack and their password got compromised, right? And for the most part, that's how every cyber attack starts, is somebody who, you know, just clicked on something they shouldn't have clicked on. And, you know, wasn't kind of being necessarily super attentive at the moment. And and, you know, so we have training to do. We're going to, so that's that's bucket one of the work we're doing to try to prevent this in the future. Bucket number two is really around where we keep the most sensitive information, so that so inventory and storage. So I think this has been good work that we've been able to do, really across all central office departments have to be part of this work. But essentially, I mean, we have terabytes of data, which I don't know how to explain what a terabyte is, but it's a lot. And so we're going through that piece by piece and identifying any piece of data that has sensitive information. And then with that, in, this will be part of that written information security program policy that will come before you. We're identifying locations where that information can be stored, our electronic locations. And we're actually putting in place tools that will stop people from storing. For example, if you have a document with a social security number on it, we have, we're going to, we're putting in tools that will actually prevent you from saving that document. To any location other than the location we want you to save it to. And so that's really the, so that really inventory of what sensitive data we have, deleting, right? Sensitive data we don't need to keep, that's a big part of this. And then for the data we do have to keep because of record retention regulations, we're going to put the, put that in locations where we can apply an additional layer of security. And I'll give an example of what I mean by, well, this goes into the third bucket, which is, you know, the hardware, the firewalls. Systems and and software we're using to sort of further secure. And and example of that is, we will be, we have not made a decision if this is going to be all users or those users with access to the most sensitive information. But you're probably all familiar or have used multi-factor authentication, which is, you can, people can find it annoying. But really what we're talking about is, you try to sign into your account from a new device, a new phone, a new laptop. It's going to say, oh, I want to send you a code, right? I want to send you a code to your phone or to your personal email address. And you have to type that code in or it won't let you in, right? That's a really effective way to prevent hacking. Because if somebody in Moldova gets your password and they try to sign into your account from Moldova, it's going to say, I want to send a code. To your phone or your personal email. Now, as long as they don't have your, as long as they don't have your physical phone or they don't have your personal email account. There's no way they're getting that code and therefore there's no way they're getting into your account. So that's an example. So there's these systems and hardware solutions we're putting in place as well. And I said, we're debating with something like that multi-factor. One of the debates is the best practice would be to apply that to all users. You all can imagine, as I can, that we might get some pushback from a subset of perhaps teachers or others who say, I don't want to get a code on my phone. Or in my personal email before I can sign into my account. So we're trying to weigh like the not making life miserable for end users, but wanting to make sure we secure things as best we can. So those are really the three buckets. So so training and policy, the the storage and inventory, you know, and then. The the hard, the actual hardware, software solutions we're putting in place. And I will say on the training, part of that is also going to be, one of the things we found to our chagrin is we have our OneDrive, right? Which is the online storage we provide to all our staff. You would, maybe you wouldn't be surprised, the number of people who have kept, put their tax returns, their their kids' financial aid forms in their SPS storage. It creates a huge problem for us, right? Because if it's in our storage and we get attacked, we're on the hook. To pay for their identity monitoring, even though we had nothing to do with them choosing to put their tax return there. So that's when I talked about those tools, we're going to try to implement those tools such that if you have a document like a tax return with your social security number. If you try to save that to OneDrive, it's going to say you can't save that here. So that's, that's really why we're trying to implement some of those tools. But that's also a training piece as well, just to say, you know, we actually, I I get an email every time somebody sends an email. Right now that contains a social security number, and there are certainly too many. But a fair number of them that have come across my desk are people submitting their documents for their refinance, right? It's it's personal uses, but it's exposing us to liability.
Well, thank you so much. Are there any questions?
I have one quick question if I could.
Yes, Attorney Murphy.
Paul, on the, why are we responsible if if someone is at work and does their taxes? Or refinances their house? Why are we responsible for their data? Should there be some hack down the road?
I'll have to defer to Mindy on the, the official legal answer, my understanding is, it's because we're the ones who are breached, right? So we're the ones responsible for securing our entire environment, which happens to include the OneDrive that we provide to our staff. And if we're the ones breached, we're the ones who are responsible for the notification. That's my understanding.
Right, that's absolutely right. You house the information and therefore the house is responsible. And that, that's why training people not to house that information is so critical.
Okay, thanks very much.
We were trying to figure out as we were doing breach notices why we were getting social security numbers of people's kids in our searches, right? And it's, well, because, like, there was a member of my staff who, I mean, I won't expose who they are, who had had their kids' financial aid forms. In their OneDrive. And I'm like, why, why is this person, my department's kid, showing up in the list of people we need to notify? And that's why.
And and I'll bet that that's a lot more prevalent than people would expect because people don't like using two computers. And so they, the one that we give them, they kind of using for everything. I bet you it's a lot more prevalent than one might originally anticipate.
Yeah, and I think with our training, we will try to give people some tools and guidance, right? So a simple, right, get a flash drive and encrypt it. And put, you know, if you don't want to have two computers, put your personal documents on a flash drive and then don't lose it.
This is very helpful. Are there any comments or questions? I just know that we talked about it a while ago and I, I, I definitely was intrigued to learn more about. You know, where we were at and what was going on. So it's really, this has been very helpful information for me, I know. So I believe if that's, if there's nothing else, then does that conclude everything on the agenda?
It appears to have. I will make a motion that we adjourn.
Do I have a second? Maria's trying a second, but she's unmute.
I'll do a roll call. Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
And Attorney Murphy.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Right, thanks, guys. Take care.